All right. All right, good evening, everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jason Howard from Stone Creek Church to lead us in vacation.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as we start tonight, we have, Father, thank you for the promise of peace, hope, and joy during the Christmas season. And, Father, we wrap up the business for this council for 2016.
And we turn our focus and attention toward 2017. I want us to pause for a moment to give you our thanks for the blessings that we have in our life and for life itself. Father, we pray over the next couple of weeks that we have a lot to celebrate with coworkers, neighbors, our family, and also our friends. And where we have an abundance, I pray that we give generously to those in our city who may need to be reminded of what peace, joy, and hope look like this holiday season. And, Father, I'm also just grieving with our Cambridge family tonight. And we ask for your extra special blessing for all of our students and the administration and staff as we've lost one of our students here in our community. You know, Father, thank you for how you've gifted our council to guide our city. And we ask for your guidance for them as we pray for tonight's agenda and for your assurance of what is right, fair, and just. Help each one of them to know how to help our city, to help it grow and to thrive. And we just ask for you to grant them the light of Christmas, which is faith, the warmth of Christmas, which is purity, the righteousness of Christmas, which is justice, and the belief in Christmas, which is truth. And in all of this, Jesus, we pray in your most blessed and holy name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Jason. I'd like to call our, the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, December 19th, 2016, to order. Sudi, if you'll please call roll and read the general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the December 19th, 2016, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or a general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. So please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We appreciate you being here tonight. And as our city clerk read the rules, there may be some of you here tonight that want to speak pertaining to field space. And since we don't have a general agenda, we don't have an agenda item specific for that, I'm going to ask for those public comments under general public comment, which will come up first. So between now and then, if you do want to speak, just, are the yellow cards, where are the yellow cards, Sudi?
I have one for that subject.
Okay, so if there, where's the rest of them? In case anybody wants to speak, feel free to grab a card and fill it out. Where are those cards? Are they on the desk, ready? Okay. All right. Sudi, if you'll please call the first item on the meeting agenda.
Our first item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 16-291.
I have a motion. Approval.
So move for a second.
You have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please.
Mayor, I'd like to, before we do that, I mean, I really believe if we've got an item on the consent agenda that it requires any kind of discussion or public comment, then we may ought to probably take that item off the consent agenda and have it under new business. I mean, I just feel like that it's, if, to me, the consent agenda is really supposed to be for items that are, that there is no public comment and there's no discussion necessary of. So if there is any discussion on an item, I really believe it ought to be moved to new business rather than being on the consent agenda. That's just my personal belief.
I'm going to run that back here because we've had some lengthy discussions on this. The actual discussion, I believe, is not on the, the items on this consent agenda. We've got an item on there for a contract.
Well, the, the, the public comment before the consent agenda is going to be adequate to address general public comments. With respect to whether an item stays on consent agenda, however, it has little to do, in my opinion, with respect to whether it's a matter of public comment. It has to, it has to do with whether or not the council wants to specifically focus on that issue with respect to its deliberation. That's the key. So that ought to guide your decision making, Mr. Mayor. But there's no requirement to take it off just because someone wants to speak about it or a topic related to it.
Okay, Joe.
Right, I think the purpose is we want to discuss it.
That's different. And if you want to discuss that specific item, then of course it can come off consent agenda.
Okay, well, I'll leave that up to council. We've got a motion and a second. If, you know, if you want to change it or if you want to see it up for as is.
Yeah, you have to withdraw your second. Okay, I'll, I'll change that to accept the agenda as written with the exception of taking the item related to the approval of the contract between the city of Milton and whichever the one it is. Oh, here it is, the New Found Life Football League from the consent agenda and moving it to new business. Is that right?
Agenda item number 16-300.
Correct.
Okay, I have a second. Got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? I'm going to just, I will vote against that, but it's only because, and as we've talked through, it's a, it's a separate issue. So I don't think we're talking, well, the comments are going to be about the particular contract. We've got about 12 contracts like that on there tonight. So if we go cherry picking one or two, but that's my opinion. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, and that's only, that's respect for everybody. I just, I want to certainly hear the issue and discuss it, but I think we need to do it in the right process, so. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. And I'll call for public comment, but to clarify, based on the, the motion, I believe if, if your public comment has to do with the item on the, which number was it, 16 on the agenda?
Number nine.
Number nine.
Number nine. The, if your comment is directly about the contract between Recreation Parks and Recreation Department and the New Life, New Found Life Football League, then you can make those, if you're specifically about that contract, you can make those comments in new business. If you want to talk about field space, things like that, different, then you can do public comment now. So, Sudi, do we have any public comment?
Would you have a general one for Bob Myers?
Good evening. I'm Bob Myers. I live at 3265 Wolf Willow Close in Milton. And this is a little unusual. I don't have, I'm not asking for anything and I'm not complaining about anything. I simply want to say to you, our wonderful city council, and to all city departments and staffers, thank you for another great year. That makes 10 in a row. And what makes our city special is how close the government and you and the staff and the departments are to the people and all that you do day in and day out throughout the year for our citizens. I've been here since the beginning, when the city was first trying to figure out what it is to be a city. And I think we have all come a long way since, in that intervening decade. Each of you should be very proud of the city and what you have accomplished. So Merry Christmas and thank you all.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. Okay, Sudi, do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Sudi, if you'll please sound the items.
The first item under consent is approval of the October 17th, 2016, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 16-292. Next is approval of the November 7th, 2016, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 16-293. Our third consent agenda item this evening is approval of the financial statements for the period ending November 2016, agenda item number 16-294. Approval of a service agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia and Granicas Inc., agenda item number 16-295. Next, approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Athletic Association Manual and Facility Use Agreement between the city of Milton and Hopewell Youth Association, agenda item number 16-296. Our sixth consent agenda item, approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Facility Use Agreement between the city of Milton and Agapi Academy LLC, agenda item number 16-297. Seventh, approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Athletic Association Manual and Facility Use Agreement between the city of Milton and Eagle Sticks Rec, Inc., agenda item number 16-298. Next, approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Facility Use Agreement between the city of Milton and Halftime Sports LLC, agenda item number 16-299. Our ninth consent, consent agenda item has been moved to new business. Next, approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Facility Use Agreement between the city of Milton and North Georgia Recreation, Inc., agenda item number 16-301. Next, approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Facility Use Agreement between the city of Milton and Spurber Music, agenda item number 16-302. Approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Contract Concession Agreement between the city of Milton and Want to Play Baseball, Inc., agenda item number 16-303. Approval of a Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement between the city of Milton and Siemens Industry, Inc., agenda item number 16-304. Approval of a Right-of-Way Maintenance Agreement between the city of Milton and Optech RWM LLC, agenda item number 16-305. Approval of an agreement between the city of Milton and Triscapes, Inc., to provide facility landscaping services, sport field maintenance, and maintenance of Bell Memorial and Providence Parks, agenda item number 16-306. Next, approval of a service agreement between the city of Milton and Atlanta Gaslight to provide gas service to the new city hall, agenda item number 16-307. And our final consent agenda item this evening, approval of the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Milton Police Department and the Georgia Department of Labor for unemployment insurance information and employment histories, agenda item number 16-308.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So next thing we will move into, we have no items on reports and presentations, so we'll move to our first presentation. Sudi, if you'll please call the first presentation item.
Consideration of Amendments to Chapter 20, Soil Erosion, Sedimentation, and Pollution Control, Article 6, Soil Erosion Within the City of Milton Code of Ordinances, agenda item number 16-270. First presentation was at the November 21st regular city council meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, my first presentation.
Mayor, I'll make approval of the first presentation as read by staff.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Koontz, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, there's no items under the public hearing, so we'll move to our zoning agenda. Sudi, if you'll please call the rules and regulations.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or association, an affidavit must accompany your public comment card. Before beginning your presentation or comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization if applicable. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of RC 16-09 to amend the Deerfield Form-Based Code in Chapter 64, Article 20, agenda item number 16-284. First presentation was at the December 5th city council meeting. This was discussed at the December 12th city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. By way of background, the purpose of this text amendment is to consider eliminating all residential uses except when located in a vertically mixed-use building for properties adjacent to Highway 9 and North Main Street. The most recent discussion on this text amendment was the December 12th city council work session. At that time, the mayor and city council directed staff to amend the proposed ordinance to eliminate residential uses for parcels adjacent to Highway 9, except for the five-acre road zone. The five-acre road zone development and use requirements will remain the same. And this change is reflected in footnote 12 on Table 10 in the Deerfield Form-Based Code. I'm available for any further questions you may have on this text amendment.
Any questions before we do public comment? Okay, do we have any public comment on this city?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and then open back up to council. Any questions to staff? Okay, Rick?
So Kathy, looking at this, your recommendation is still the majority of Highway 9, the undeveloped portion, and, and I guess anything for redevelopment, would only be for commercial. The exception is that the five-acre, the two parcels.
That's right. The five-acre parcels are deleted. And in addition, the only residential use that we would allow in the rest of the Route 9 corridor, which is essentially the majority of it, is in a vertical mixed-use building. But other than that, there would be no single-use residential use, for instance, allowed.
Matt?
And Rick, I'll make a comment on that because you weren't here when we discussed the Form-Based Code. A lot of it was that we wanted to have more into the look and feel of the buildings, but be more flexible with regards to the use. I think the mixed-use idea is right by that we force commercial on the bottom. But above that, it could be residential or it could shift to office or whatever, whatever the market may bear. And that was kind of what it was designed to do, I think. That was the spirit of our intent at that time. So while they may have uses of residential, they could shift to office or back or vice versa depending on how the markets go. However, the look and feel wants to be like a mixed-use type building. And so I think that's what we were trying to intend here as we did this again.
Yes, as long as it was mixed-use, it couldn't be all residential in the building.
Right, right.
Okay. Sorry, not Karen and then Rick.
So the area around five acres would stay as we had, was originally presented and voted on by us previously for those, just the two parcels on either side.
That is correct. That is correct.
No change to those at all?
No change at all.
Okay.
Rick?
So, but this would eliminate the ability to just have townhome or residential fronting Highway 9, only residential, which was how we started this whole discussion.
Right. Precisely.
Okay, anybody else? I, I do have a, and I mentioned during the work session, concern though, if you look at all the flats, they are all, the majority of them are surrounded by a single-family residential. So you need to, you know, if we support this, we need to be prepared. They're going to have commercial right up to them. There's not going to be a, a buffer between, you know, a lesser use. So there, there may be some unintended consequences there.
And when you looked at that, are most of those as a residential feeding back into residential property? Or is it fronting right on Highway 9?
Feeding back, so basically you put a commercial building, you, you know, it's right up against the subdivision, so. Anybody else? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 16-284 as presented by staff this evening.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? Again, I'm, I'm just expressing my concerns that we may have some unintended consequences with only allowing the commercial. I agree, we want commercial in the city and need it, but maybe some unintended consequences for some of our neighbors back there. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's six to one. The mayor opposing, Sudi. Okay, if we can move on to our next zoning agenda.
Our next item is consideration of RC 16-07 to amend the HE1 Agricultural District Regarding Paved and Unpaved Roads in Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 2, in Section 64-416, Development Standards. Agenda item number 16-282. First presentation was at the December 5th meeting. This was discussed at the December 12th city council work session. Staff is recommending deferral pending additional information. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is true. Staff is recommending deferral. We are still working with the attorneys to come up with language that we feel will suitably carry forward the directions that you gave staff at the last meeting.
Okay, Joe?
Kathy, understand that. And we have talked about this a couple of different times. And I was actually willing to discuss why we should go ahead and make a decision on this tonight. I had some questions I wanted to ask, but it sort of struck me as being strange that in the packet, both the packet that's distributed on the website and one that we get in on our iPads, there is no supporting documentation for any of the items that state staff recommends deferral pending additional information, which presumes that the council is going to agree and go ahead and defer as opposed to discuss. And so I just wanted to know, was that a oversight? Was that intentional? Is that our standard practice and I just never noticed it before?
The, the deferral was done at my direction. However, I don't see why we wouldn't have included the packet because we can only recommend deferral. So that was, that would have been an oversight.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right, any other questions or certainly open up to, to a motion?
I just have one question. Are we still, do we still have, are we protected until January? If we go ahead and we defer, we defer this? It's March.
Yeah, we're, we're protected.
We are. Okay, so we, okay.
Do we need to have a specific date to defer to the next? You know, sometimes we have to put a date on it.
When do you think staff would be there?
We're looking at the, the third, how about the third, no, the third, the, the second January meeting.
That's January 30th.
Jan, January 30th.
Right, but that's the zoning meeting?
Yes, correct.
Let's do it for that.
Okay.
January 30th.
Okay. Okay, Joe?
Sure.
So just one minute. So we're, we're soliciting feedback or gathering additional information. Can we be a little bit more specific about what we're looking for to sort of tie this up?
I can jump in there. Um, so we're analyzing the, the various parcels that were originally presented to you that were directly affected. Some of the one, some of the parcels that were provided to you as possibly being affected were in fact not.
were in fact not, because the gravel roads were private gravel roads, not public gravel roads. In addition, we didn't have our GIS capabilities, which is why you had some rudimentary drawings last time. We want to, we're cross-checking that with our GIS and making sure that all the information you have in front of you is in fact accurate.
Okay, you back, Joe?
No, you and I had talked about it this past week. Are we going to personally identify and contact each one of the property owners that's in question on this issue?
Now, we are under, not to speak on Ken's behalf, but we are not required to do so.
Right, I understand.
It'll be, it'll be your choice as to whom we, whom you direct me to contact and how wide of a berth you want to go with that.
I think we would agree over-communicate versus under-communicate, so. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to defer Agenda Item Number 16282 to the January 30th.
Mayor Speckly, I do have public comment.
I'm sorry. Okay, we'll have public comment?
The first one comes from Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 1565 Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. Tonight I am speaking in favor of amending Chapter 64, the AG1 zoning ordinance, to make it reflect Chapter 50, Milton subdivision ordinance. Milton's gravel roads remind me of Robert Frost's most famous poem, "The Road Not Taken." I'm sure you know the poem. The last three lines state, "Two roads diverged in a wood, and I, I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference." Milton is also at a fork in the road. More than any other feature, Milton's gravel roads epitomize Milton's rural character. Milton's gravel roads are a treasure that should be cherished and protected. As you know, Chapter 50, Milton subdivision ordinance mandates that newly created lots adjacent to or accessed from a gravel road must be at least three acres. Unfortunately, the language of Chapter 64, Milton's AG1 zoning ordinance, is not aligned with the subdivision ordinance. This issue has been in play for nine months and has come before council several times. And at one time or another, six out of seven council members have stated that we need to fix the misalignment of Chapters 50 and 64 in favor of the three-acre minimum. The city attorney has stated that all that is needed to fix the misalignment is a few tweaks, that's his words, to the existing zoning ordinances. He has further stated that precedent is not an issue. I want to be very clear that I do not support three-acre minimums for existing dual-frontage parcels, except for lots adjacent to a gravel road. And to my knowledge, no one in the Milton Coalition has advocated such a policy. This is not to disparage staff in their attempts to modify Chapter 64. Staff has been put in the difficult position of having to reconcile inputs from citizens, the planning commission, and sometimes conflicting and vague guidance from city council. I think staff has done the best job they can do under the circumstances. In closing, I urge council to uphold the three-acre minimum for lots adjacent to or accessed from a gravel road, take the road less traveled, and make a positive difference for Milton and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Sudi, do we have any more public comment?
We do, from Mr. Daniel Fernandez.
Good evening. Daniel Fernandez, 14855 Wood Road. The general intent of the proposed text amendment seeks to protect gravel roads. Gravel roads, along with their view sheds, are the most distinctive features and major contributor to Milton's rural character. A more specific intent derives from a perceived conflict in the code between Section 50-71 and Section 64-416, and the unintended consequences of past interpretations. These interpretations have given greater weight to the zoning ordinance, rendering the subdivision ordinance useless at times. The rules for statutory construction requires that interpreter give meaning to all parts of the code. The rule assumes that lawmakers intended to give meaning to all their words. Therefore, the intent of both the zoning and subdivision ordinances must be considered and interpreted as a whole. It is not presumed that the lawmakers intended to enact meaningless language when a plausible harmonization of the two avoids the perceived conflict. This harmony as pertains to Section 50 and 64 is possible as the Milton Code stands today. Additionally, the following should be considered. The process of approving a plat is controlled by the subdivision ordinances. The allowed use, purpose, or function of this land is controlled by the zoning ordinances. The subdivision ordinance is clear and specific when speaking to adjacency and access. The zoning ordinance is general and speaks to frontage only. A specific statute would generally prevail over a general statute. When the code in question are read as a whole, a lot in the AG1 zoning district created by the subdivision of a land adjacent to an unpaved road with double frontage and/or is accessed from a gravel road must have a minimum of three acres. The proposed code text amendments should be viewed as an attempt to clarify perceived ambiguity. The amendment should remove as much possible the need for community developments interpretation and the reading of these specific code sections. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have any more public here, or public comment? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any more discussion from council or questions? And I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to defer Agenda Item 16282 to our January 30th, 2017 meeting.
January 30th. January 30th.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt for a deferral till January 30th, and a second by Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, Sudi Field, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RC 16-08 to amend the definitions regarding paved and unpaved roads in Chapter 64, Article 1, in Section 64-1, Definitions. Agenda Item Number 16283, first presentation was at the December 5th meeting, discussed at the December 12th Work Session. Staff is recommending deferral pending additional information. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff is also recommending deferral of this item for the same reason as stated previously.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this, Sudi?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and then is there comments or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer Agenda Item 16283 to January 30th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt for deferral, and a second from Councilmember Thurmond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, next we'll move on to unfinished business. Sudi Field, please call the item.
This item is discussion regarding amending Chapter 50, Article 3, Division 1, Section 50-71, Compliance With City Procedures And Guidelines Required, Paved And Unpaved Roads. Agenda Item Number 16285, first presentation was at the December 5th meeting, discussed at the December 12th City Council Work Session. Staff is recommending deferral pending additional information. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, staff recommends deferral for the same reason as stated previously.
Okay, any questions? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay. We don't have any. Either questions or open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item, I mean, we defer Agenda Item 16-285 till the January 30th, 2017 meeting.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Councilmember Thurmond, second, Councilmember Morek. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Sudi Field, please sound the first item. I believe we added an item from our consent agenda, so if you'll call that item first.
This item is approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Athletic Association Manual and Facility Use Agreement between the City of Milton and Newfound Life Football League, Agenda Item Number 16300.
Okay, and I believe we had, council wanted to open up this for public comment. Now, I will say this, not this specific contract, but discussion on it, but I have asked our city manager to bring back to us in our next available work session, to get with the Parks and Recreation, the board, and our staff, and bring to us our field use ordinance and, you know, let us talk about field space ability and use, so. But with this item, is there any public comment on the agenda item that was read?
We do have one, and that's from Stephanie Butler.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Stephanie Butler. I live at 770 Stratford Drive in Milton. I'm here on behalf of the North Atlanta Football League. I'm the president. I do have some supporters here from our league, be it board members, coaches, cheer director. Not going to take up a lot of time, but throughout the season, I'm asked by our parents quite frequently, as they drive by Bell Memorial Park in the evening, why there isn't room for us to practice during the week on that space, especially when it's void of activity. And, you know, we're not asking for game day space on Saturdays. We don't need anything on Sundays, just a couple of days during the week as we try and squeeze 370 kids, 197 of which are City of Milton residents on two turf fields at North Park. So it's just a discussion. I understand that obviously there's money involved, there's agreements between City of Alpharetta, how the money gets exchanged between programs, and, you know, how many City of Milton residents participate in Alpharetta programs and vice versa. I understand there's a big check that City of Milton has to write to Alpharetta at the end of the year. I understand all that, and I'm willing to, you know, get into discussions with Alpharetta to see if there's an equitable solution specific to our football programs, because we do serve so many of the kids in our community. I think that the Milton Steelers have 109 kids. Like I said, we have 370, and 197 of those are City of Milton residents. So just looking bigger picture and trying to serve our community the best way that we can, it just makes sense to possibly figure out how to share field space. We're not opposed to renting. We'd rather not. But if the field space is going to go unused during the week during football season, you know, that's just hard for our taxpayers and members of our league to understand and grasp. It's, I've gotten a huge education today on the back and forth between the cities and how that whole thing works. And quite frankly, with the age of Milton being so young, you know, compared to Alpharetta and the amount of time that they've had to establish facilities and programs, and we're getting there. I'm a City of Milton resident. I don't play football. I don't get paid to be the president of the football league. I've been telling people lately, I do sell real estate for a living, but this seems to be my first job. I go to bed at night thinking about football, and I wake up thinking about football, and just ways to improve the program for our kids. And that's really the bottom line. We, you know, we're open to discussion. We just want to make it right for all the kids in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment, Sudi?
That's all, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing or public comment on that. And again, just in general, for those that are interested in that in the audience, as well as our citizens, this item will be coming before our council first available work session so we can discuss the field space issue. Okay, anybody on this particular agenda item, Karen?
In addition to the field space issue, will we also be discussing our agreement with Alpharetta and how that is all? I mean, because when we originally did it, it was, it was a set amount that we were doing, and then now we've got a multiplier in, and so we're actually paying a good bit more than what, one and a half times what we, the cost for just out of, out of city residents to pay, so it just, it's a big check we're doing.
It is significant, absolutely. If that's what the council would like, we would bring that information as well.
Just for the audience, you know, not to get in too deep, but, you know, originally, City of Milton had, we had lots of park space, land, but no facilities per se, whereas Alpharetta did. So most of our Milton kids were having to go to Alpharetta and pay, you know, one and three-quarters times because they were out of city fees. And Milton didn't have much to offer, say, to Alpharetta and surrounding, so we did do an agreement with Alpharetta to compensate so that all of our kids could play there without having to pay additional fees. As we are starting to build our own parks programs, and we've got more to offer, we certainly can revisit that. So I'd be glad to, you know, we can have that as a second item, possibly our next work session to discuss. All right, anybody else on this, this agenda item on this contract?
Obviously, I'd agree on looking at all the agreements we have as well. I think that what we have done is good. I'd love to see it expand to one point, you know, to see if there's other ways we can find synergies between City of Alpharetta and Milton, because I think that's, there are some good things about what we've done. And, but we need to get the Parks and Rec Board involved in that. I think that they would do a very good job of looking at that and seeing where all the changes have been and look at those numbers. I think it'd be important.
Absolutely. So fortunately, we are getting more and more nice facilities, so it's growing pains. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 16-300.
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion for approval. Councilmember Coot, second, but Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion? Hearing none, and I do discussion, I want to thank members of the audience on this general issue for coming out, because when it's all said and done, it's really not about different leagues and competition in this. It's about the kids, and whether they live here or here, we're all one big community, so, you know, we need to be, be able to use efficiently all our resources, whether it's Milton, Alpharetta, or our neighbors. So appreciate you being here. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. Field, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution to create the Milton Equestrian Committee, MEC, Agenda Item Number 16309. Mr. Ken Girardi.
Mayor, members of the council, you have on your agenda this evening a resolution that would create a committee that doesn't exist right now. It should be the Milton Equestrian Committee. The purpose of the committee is set forth in Paragraph 1 under creation. It is to advocate for, promote, and participate in the selection and interpretation of equestrian initiatives and equestrian events, to encourage local exploration, generate civic pride, increase tourism, and showcase local equestrian land, equestrian businesses, and equestrian initiatives. The governance would be set up by an Equestrian Committee Board of Directors, which would be comprised of seven individuals, as per the City of Milton Charter. The initial slate of those individuals would be selected by either a council member, or the mayor, or both, all of whom have to be ratified by a majority vote in form of the council. Following the initial slate of board of directors, they will then nominate their own replacements, who will then have to become and be ratified by the council. The term of those individuals is generally going to be two years, although they will be permitted, as is very typical, to go into rollover terms, which is very standard. Conduct of business is in Paragraph 5. They shall meet at regular intervals as necessary to perform their tasks. They will, of course, self-organize, maybe with the assistance of my office, maybe not, just depending upon how much involvement I need to have with respect to their formation. They do have the ability to provide for voluntary members as well, to further their activities, and to adopt an official logo. Mr. Mayor, this is ready to go, ready to go.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item, Sudi?
We do not, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I missed a point. Could I, could I clarify one point?
Absolutely.
This was huge, and I didn't want to miss this. Uh, qualifications. Members of the Board of Directors must be, number one, a resident of the City of Milton. That, of course, is set forth in your charter. Be at least twenty-one years of age, and, this is the key, either personally own one or more horses or own land which has maintained one or more horses during the duration of a consecutive six-month period prior to the time of appointment. Forgive me for missing that.
Any question? I have a couple of comments. Um, certainly in favor of this. Ordinance and committee, or not ordinance, but committee, um, you know, one thing, obviously, everybody thinks of preserving land and the equestrian community that we have, but it's also AG1 land. So, as far as agriculture, there are different uses besides just, uh, the equestrian that folks want to see. So, um, I'm certainly fine to, to call the, the equestrian committee, but we might want to focus also, uh, at least have a, a door open that someone that maybe has a quest, you know, agricultural land, or there may be, they may raise cattle, or they may raise, you know, something else that, uh, fits the intent of this. So, my only, you know, suggestion is that maybe we open it up to where it doesn't necessarily, even though it's the equestrian committee, it doesn't necessarily, some, again, I use the example, you know, we still have a few folks that have a lot of land and might raise cattle or use their property in an agricultural, um, way. The other thing also, um, in the wording, we've got advocate, but I think we need to strongly, uh, recommend that this committee educates the public. Um, you know, I'll use a simple example, an important example that fireworks and the, the issues with, uh, with horses and large animals, you know, we need to make sure that this committee educates people and gets a lot of communication out along with the city. So, other than that, I'll open it up. Karen?
I have just a couple of questions. It's, as far as the people that are comprising this committee, it looks like it's done differently than it is any other committee that we have. Um, whereas it doesn't really say, says it by the mayor and individual councils, not one council member each appointing somebody. And also, they appoint, after two years, they appoint their replacements, and, and I'm not real sure why we're doing that because, I mean, the one thing you want to do is make sure you've got a good representation. You don't want it to be just a, a group that, you know, gets together and is, is not inclusive of others that may be in the equestrian community. So, why was it done that way when we've never had anything done this way?
Councilwoman Thurman, I'm not able to speak to exactly why it was done differently. Uh, if we want to change it back to where after their initial term, they go through the same appointment process, just like they worked for the original creation, just tell me that. And if you make your motion to do that, we can do it that way. But I'm not able to speak to why it was done differently.
Yeah.
Um, a little bit of history on this. I know that I worked with staff on the creation of this. Um, we used the Milton Arts Committee as the model for the creation of this, much like Milton Goes Green. Um, and the initial setup was where it was. Um, they are, the language was the same as what we did for those, except for we added the at-large component of it on paragraph four of the term, um, which was, um, important because obviously not many equestrian people live in Ricks and Joe's district. So, um, so that was the model of it. Um, I don't think it's, you know, if you want to make it more of a official committee like what we might do with Parks and Rec or Planning Commission.
Well, I mean, I agree on the at-large because we want to get the, you know, people that are, you know, really passionate about it. But I just don't under, to me, it, it'll be something that is appointed, even if it's appointed every two years by a council member and the mayor, rather than them reappointing themselves.
And I'd be okay with that if that's what you guys want, is to have it, to make it more, but I would recommend a four-year term along with the council's.
That's fine.
With the council's term.
And do it at large.
Yeah, it could be at large, couldn't concurrent with the council's term because some may have four, three, two, one.
And that's, and that's, I mean, you know, we have the, the ability to deviate from that model. That is the more typical model.
Right, yeah.
The, the appointments follow the council member.
Sure.
You don't have to appoint them by district. It's at-large, candidly, so we get the best pool of, of individuals. But, uh, that's fine as well. If that's where you want to go, that's really easy to, to dump in there.
Okay.
Would, would council also like to consider, you know, adding in there that besides equestrian, it could be, you know, someone with agricultural.
Yeah.
Use, uh, as well as, you know, like I say, examples, raise cattle or, or grow, you know, grow something, just to kind of open that.
And I jotted some language while you were talking, so, I mean, I, I was trying to follow that.
I do have a thought on that.
Okay.
Um, and it is in disagreement with that point, not because there are any less from that perspective, but the industry as a whole is mainly equestrian. Um, I think it's, when I saw a stat, it was several billion dollars in Georgia, plus with additional, you know, future opportunities that maybe is there, that was generally equestrian. Um, I looked at, I think Dunwoody as well tried this too, and they made it open to large land possibilities. Um, they didn't focus entirely on equestrian, and then they lost it. Um, it didn't work on that. And I think we would do better if we kept our focus on the industry that does generate the revenues, and everything else will probably follow, in my mind. Um, if we allow it to get watered down or create the disagreement, I think we could lose our focus and lose our opportunities. Just my point.
Okay, anybody else? Any other comments or all over?
Ken, you said you, you jotted some language down along that. It's kind of what we were. I did. Um, this would be on paragraph three, after you go through a consecutive six-month period. So, basically, right now, you've got two, two criteria that get into the heart of this committee, which is to either own one or more horses or own land which has maintained one or more horses during the duration of a consecutive six-month period, or own land which is used for primarily an agricultural purpose. I think it's what the mayor was recommending.
Yeah. And that, that means, that, that opens it up a little more. It doesn't mean we
don't necessarily, you know, picking, uh, somebody that has one or more horses or, or has housed it. So, I, I do kind of like the idea of opening it up to, you know, bona fide agricultural uses, but I think the majority of these pointees will be definitely equestrian people. But it gives us a little bit of flexibility there.
I think if you, to Matt's point, though, and certainly I understand, if you look at the makeup and the, the direction of the committee, it is to promote the, the equestrian lifestyle here, but that also ties into the agricultural. And, uh, again, if we can get more support, because that's what we would like, I believe everybody would like to keep as much as possible so that, uh, may open that up a little bit. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think we're all, all we're trying to do there is give each councilman the flexibility of finding somebody that could serve on our committee. So, I would be in favor of opening up a little bit and allowing the council member to make a decision on who they want to appoint.
Okay, Bill?
I would suggest, uh, kind of a compromise that, uh, we identify those equestrian, uh, landowners, uh, first, and in the absence of any, which I can't imagine there would be, that then we defer to, uh, large, uh, landowners with, uh, livestock or agriculturally inclined, uh, property.
Okay, anybody else?
It's, it is what it is. We're calling it the, uh.
Question.
Transmitting. So, I think it's.
Then I think about calling it equestrian, and then if you look at the direction, that's going to drive the, the intent there. Okay, I'll open up for a motion if. More discussion?
Do we know what, do we know what the final reading is going to be that we're? Right now, what I have is, is that obviously the motion would be to adopt the resolution, except we would change the selection process, make it back to our typical model, that even after the term expires, that there is going to be nominations by the council, application by the council, four-year term, co-terms with the terms in office. We're going to add the language about the equestrian owners, or excuse me, the agricultural, bona fide agricultural ownership. And I think you wanted to add the word educate into their mission statement.
So moved.
Do I have a motion, Councilmember Thurman?
I understand all that.
Councilmember Thurman has, uh, as presented with the, the changes that our city attorney, uh, just discussed and second by councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudi, will you please sound the final new business item?
Final item this evening is consideration of the intergovernmental agreement between Forsyth County and the City of Milton for the provision of fire, rescue, and police services to certain property located within Forsyth County. Agenda item number sixteen, three one zero. Mr. Ken Girardi.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, thank you. Uh, this is an item that we discussed at the last work session. For purposes of disclosure, I do represent Forsyth County. pursuant to waiver, I'm here to discuss this. Uh, this is an intergovernmental agreement in respect to the provision of basically public safety services that would be within the jurisdictional boundaries of Forsyth County. The public safety first responders would actually originate out of the City of Milton and provide service in Forsyth County on a first responder, um, status. Uh, these are very common. Uh, whenever you've got a jurisdictional area that just makes sense to have one jurisdiction handle it, uh, as, particularly in the first responder category, better than the host jurisdiction, it makes sense to do this. This is nothing other than, than permission. Permission from Forsyth County that City of Milton's folks can come in and provide this service. Obviously, everybody would retain their own liability exposure. There is no compensation associated with this. The various public safety units themselves would work out the nine-one-one course, uh, communication to make sure that the appropriate responders are in fact plugged into the system to make sure they respond appropriately. Forsyth County has already adopted, uh, this, and it is up for your consideration. I'm happy to ask any questions.
Just to clarify, you know, we discussed this, um, and, and obviously, we're, we're doing it out of the spirit of public safety.
Correct.
We get the border and we can save a life, and it's our fire truck or police car, whatever, um, then we want to do it.
Yeah, I know the Forsyth County public safety folks said that Milton was much better poised to respond quicker than they were.
Yeah, and, and same, we'd hope our neighbors do that. But to your point, there's no compensation, which obviously we have a cost for, for our services. Basically, the way I re, or I understand it, this is for emergencies and the first response.
Right.
Forsyth County, if it's long-term investigation or long-going, by the time they get there, they will, will step in and.
Forsyth County arson investigators have the full authority to continue to do arson investigations. The Forsyth County Sheriff's Office will continue to do, you know, any sort of protracted legal, or law enforcement investigation in these jurisdictions.
Just who can get there the, the quickest to, to hopefully save a life or, or help. So, okay, any questions or comments? Not, I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item sixteen, three ten.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval. Councilmember Hewitt, second by councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unan, unanimous, Sudi. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to reports. Um, first, the council side, I, I want to just make a comment. Uh, I was able to attend the, uh, Milton Home Show and, uh, to, to benefit the friends of the library. And, uh, I know, heard a lot of people. The only complaint I heard was, you know, people couldn't get enough tickets because they went in about nine minutes. So, um, that's good and bad. The, uh, the good news is that it was a great event and cause, and I think everybody who's involved enjoyed, enjoyed it. Um, and, you know, maybe next year it just needs to grow up. So, Bill?
I'd like to comment on the same item. Um, I think it was an overwhelming success. And we have here with us tonight Bob Myers, who was the chairman of that whole effort. And I think he did a great job in pulling it all together and, uh, making it, uh, hopefully an annual tradition.
And I, I had the pleasure of working at one of the, uh, houses. I worked at the eighteen ninety-nine farmhouse, um, the afternoon. And it was great just meeting a bunch of Milton residents that were coming through and how excited they were to see that, finally see the, the historic home that was there and, um, how much they were enjoying the tour as it was. So, that was, you know, it was great. And then also, we had the, uh, the pancake breakfast. I don't think we've had a council meeting. I, I will tell you that my dogs thoroughly enjoyed going to the pancake breakfast and seeing Santa Claus. Uh, I did not keep them there very long, uh, but I didn't want them to help themselves to the bacon that was being cooked. But, uh, they thoroughly enjoyed going up there and seeing all the kids and, uh, there was a lot of excitement around the event.
That's all.
And it brought out, it was funny because you see, I saw a lot of the kids that were at the crab apple, Christmas and crab apple, and that was more of a little bit older kids. The pancake breakfast seemed to bring in a little younger kids. It was really nice that we have two different events that bring in all different age levels, so.
And Chief Edgers here, thank you, to you and, and all your guys for doing that. It seems to be a, a very popular event. I think we just, this is what our second, second year doing this. Uh, I made the comment how well-attended it was, and obviously being the fire department, fire station, and I just thought, you know, if it's the police station, I don't know that any of these people would show up. Sorry, chief, had to do it. Sorry, Brett, y'all. All right, anybody else?
I just want to say, you know, um, great job to Rick as well and me for not getting any accidents since we were helping to park cars, which was an ordeal in itself, but it was great. So, you guys did a great job on all of that. A lot of great people. It seemed like a lot of smiling faces were coming off those buses.
People were really happy, which was, which is nice.
Good job.
And the weather was great.
The weather was good.
Yep. And all those volunteers that helped out too did a great job. So, a lot of people were tired on that.
I guess that's my comment too, is just, got to help out that day, but just seeing the number of people in the houses that had volunteered. It was all voluntary effort, the people that staffed the tables. Um, I, I was just impressed. And then I, I was able to actually see Karen do her thing. Uh, I had to be, what do they call those?
The bus docent.
A bus docent.
Your bus docent. I was a house docent.
Yeah, but, uh, it was, it was interesting to see, actually get a glimpse in some of these different homes. And that, the historical home was interesting because they were actually baking cookies and sharing that with everybody that came through.
Well, the nice thing about all these events is it's bringing community together, and it's bringing the Milton name to the forefront when it, when it brings the community together. So, because, I mean, we still have a lot of people that use Alpharetta for their address, even though they're located within Milton, just because that's what they've been doing for years. So, but I think, uh, we're starting to really get the, the Milton name, the Milton culture, the Milton, you know, there's starting to be some real prestige to go along with it. So, and I actually had a couple of people ask me, well, can I change my address to Milton? It's like, yeah, about nine years ago.
It is Milton.
Yes.
Yeah, I totally agree. I always say that one of the things I think were most, all of us are most important is the sense of community and feel. So.
Thank you, Bob.
And if you notice, most people when they, when they're selling their house, they want to put Milton on.
Exactly.
All right, I'll open up staff. Steve?
We've got a, a couple of, uh, presentations today, but before, I just want to, uh, let you know, this past Tuesday, uh, Police and Fire worked with, Alpharetta Police and Fire and at the, uh, the, the good graces of them inviting us. Their, their foundation puts on Shop with a Cop over at, uh, over at Walmart. Uh, it was an incredible event. We had, we had all kinds of police officers and our firefighters there, working with them, shopping with, uh, some disadvantaged kids over there. It was, it's an incredible event. If you're ever able to take a look at, and the kids, just the smiles on their faces, it's a, it's a great, great event. So, we're fortunate that Alpharetta includes us in that event. Um, want to remind you that we are closed Friday and Monday, um, City Hall. So, uh, if you're banging on the doors, that's why. And, uh, Merry Christmas.
I, uh, also want to reiterate what, what Chief said about Shop with a Cop. Uh, one year, I was, uh, helping out with that, and, you know, they give you about a hundred dollars to spend, and you get a child. And of course, this little boy I had, you know, you could tell he was eyeing the toys, but then he wondered, well, maybe I should get socks or some underwear and things like that. So, we got that. And then, next thing, I was, you know, wanted to give him something, but he wanted to get something for his grandfather. And so, we pretty much spent his hundred dollars, and I sold him on the bicycle. So, I'm like, come on over here, you know? I'm a pony up. So, I got him a bicycle, and of course, you got to get a helmet and all. So, I thought, well, it's a great cause. I'm glad to do it. We walk up to the cashier and we're, we're checking out, and he looks, he says, there's my mother, and there's my little brother. His little brother's looking at that bike. Come on, let's go get a bike. So, we got these kids, two, two new bikes and all. And then his mother looks, you know, all excited, but looks at me and says, I don't know how we get these home. So, I look over and I say, you ever ridden in a fire truck? So, this kid's got new bikes. Hey, I got you a ride home in a fire truck. So, it was exciting.
Not bad.
But, yes, all right.
All right, first up is ComDev.
Thank you. Well, we've got lots of things going on for, over the new year. Um, first of all, um, we've, um, created the master plan for the downtown Milton. Um, and the final presentation on that was held on November thirtieth. Um, at the Milton Library, we had approximately sixty people in attendance. Um, and it's anticipated that the plan, after going to the Planning Commission, will come to the city council for review and consideration at your February meeting. Next, uh, the update to the tree. Next, the update to the tree preservation ordinance. We have scheduled our next stakeholder group meeting for Monday, January twenty-fifth, and we hope soon after that to develop a draft of the ordinance that we can then take through the public review process. We also have gone out to bid for an RFQ, request for qualifications, for the creation of a unified development code, and we hope to award that contract late January or early February, the very latest. Next, we've got several text amendments that will be coming your way. The first is to create the steep slopes, and that will come to you at the end of January. We have another text amendment regarding, well, the ones regarding the paved and unpaved roads. There are three that were deferred, and those also will come to you January thirtieth. The form-based code, we dealt with this evening. The next one is to consideration to amend the rural Milton overlay, single-family uses, and height. And that's really a tandem amendment to our retaining walls. We want to make sure that by limiting the height of the retaining walls, that we don't encourage anyone to put in a large sub-basement in terms of height. So that's what that will be addressing. Next is the consideration to amend the Crab Apple Form-Based Code as it relates to building units allowed for parking structures. This is a loophole we found out about, and we wanted to deal with it. Next is a text amendment to the AG1 district relating to development standards, and this essentially deals with some tweaking that was pointed out to us that needed to be done, and it's sort of a cleanup issue as it relates to the rural view shed. Then, we also have revisions to the plat process. You will be seeing that at your February meeting, and that will be a different way of having our preliminary plats and then our final plats reviewed. As you remember, we discussed having the preliminary plats reviewed by the Planning Commission, approved by them, and then you all as a body would review the final plat. So that language is being developed. Lastly, there is a use permit that's coming through at twenty-seven eighty-five Francis Road by Chrysalis Experimental Academy to consider a use permit for private school, and you will be seeing that also at the end of January. So those are some of the items that will be coming your way in the next couple of months for your review.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Okay, Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few updates. One, you guys approved in the budget this year for us to put out an RFP for Business Rebootment Research Study. I sent that over to Honor today, and it should be going out in the paper next week, and submissions will be due by the end of January. The Art Council, I have a couple people that y'all have already had sworn in. The rest of you, if you need help, please let me know. I have a list of people, of residents who are interested. I've also applied to the Atlanta Regional Council's Art Leadership Program. It should find out soon if Milton got accepted into that. I met with a local Realtor person last week, and they potentially have some incubator space for us, since Police and Fire took my space at City Hall. They, I just in passing told them that that was something we've been working on, and they're like, let's see what we can do after, let's get together after the holidays. So hopefully, beginning of next year, we can get, they said more than twelve hundred square feet, actually, is what they could give me. And then last, South by Southwest is coming up again this March. We're busy working on that. This year, Metro Atlanta, we're going to have a booth at the Job Fair for two days, where we're going to bring actual companies, who are actually going to be hiring real people. You'll meet with companies at a podium. If they like you, they'll be able to take you back to a back room to interview you. If at that point, they're still interested, they'll be able to invite you to our house the next day, where they can further get to know you, and hopefully walk away with a real in-hand job offer to move to Atlanta and come work here. And then we're also going to be focusing virtual reality and augmented reality while we're there, as well, bringing those types of people.
Okay, any questions? Matt?
Yes, sir.
While back, we just discussed in passing, and Steve, you were there as well, Jim, potentially doing a PowerPoint presentation on the creation of nonprofits in the city. Do you have any updates on that?
The nonprofits, we're working on making the business license process for them easier. We went to Special Equestrians, is that, that's them, and we want to help them and do things for them, and realized they didn't have a business license. And I went online to send them the business license, and realized it was eleven pages, where looking at that, you needed to know your NAICS code. It looked like you had to know all of these different numbers to plug in, when theirs is free. So I went through and I just blacklined through the eleven pages and sent them, and what they needed was four pages. So we're working on little things like that to make it as easy as possible, because they don't have to have a business license, so make it as easy as possible for them to get it. And then with that, we're working with the courts to see where we can plug in the nonprofits for our community service hours, and they'll need a business license for that.
Why don't you talk a little bit about what we're going to do with them once they're, with the business licenses, depending if they'll get us a result of...
So, we don't want people just to, and same thing for our home-based business licenses. We don't want to just be taxing people an additional seventy-five hundred fifty dollars a year. With our new City Hall, we'll have that community space available. The, maybe, I don't know if y'all know this, the Metro Chamber, they offer, if you qualify, five thousand, they'll give like five thousand dollar scholarships to people to help them export internationally. So have the Metro Chamber come and talk to our local businesses about how to get into that business, and potentially have a little fund to start doing that. There are billions of dollars worth of government contracts in Fulton County. When I looked at the list, there wasn't a single Milton city that was receiving government contracts. That doesn't mean that they could be on Winward or not have given an address, but the list I saw, there weren't any on there. So finding opportunities like that to bring the state or the Metro Chamber or people to come in and educate our businesses on these opportunities that they may not know about, and that would all be, I mean, the cost of coffee for us to really help them. And we're talking about doing a home-based expo, to bring all of our home-based businesses out, a nonprofit expo, all of these things that we'll be able to do once we have this awesome community room at our new City Hall.
And ultimately, what we want to do is, we'll grow these home-based businesses to the point where they are now, they're going to need commercial space in the new buildings that'll be built right down here in Deerfield.
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? Steph? I'll conclude this meeting. I have a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion to second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I'll say no, just because I love you guys. Just be different.
What's that?
I voted no to adjourn, just because I love you guys and Merry Christmas.
All right. Thank you, guys. Yes, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Yeah, I voted no to adjourn.